Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item up, we'll need to approve the meeting agenda. I believe we'd like to make some adjustments in the lineup here. Greg, do you want to move?
We are going to approve the agenda with modifying the order so that number seven consent items precedes acknowledgements of the five.
Okay, we have motion to bump the consent items up in order. We have a second?
Second.
Second of them. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the amended agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Agenda carries. I'll put my glasses on here. Mr. Carter, you owe me this three after consent and then we can go into discussion with the items on it today. So consent items, approved board meeting minutes, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting or June ninth, special meeting, financial claims, May bills. C treasures report, D accept donations, student accounts, eighty dollars Lower Clemmick Viking Boutique, eighty dollars Lower Clemmick Viking Boutique, four hundred and fifty dollars North Emmanuel Lutheran Church Women's Group, PRHS Scholarship Fund in memory of Erling Kelthing, twenty-five dollars Steve Mishke, PRHS Scholarship Fund in memory of Erling Kelthing, ten dollars Jeanette Gogel, also to the high school scholarship fund in memory of Larry O, fifteen dollars Brent Fraser, also to the high school scholarship fund in memory of Tommy Fredette, fifteen dollars Brent Fraser, Donald Schmidt Scholarship Fund, one thousand dollars Rebecca Schmidt, PRHS FFA, seven hundred dollars Falcon Rapids Ducks Unlimited, PRHS Wrestling in memory of Paul Bach and twenty dollars Jerry and Gloria Willem. Item E personnel, approve the resignation of John Moe as elementary teacher at Viking Elementary School, approve the hire of Elizabeth Brenda Mule, a special education teacher, approve the hire of Nadine Brown as all school musical director, approve the hire of Zane Biles as all school musical vocal director, approve the hire of Sean Fitzsimmons as all school musical music director, approve the hire of Amy King as high school student council advisor, approve the hire of Kate Walver Martinez as assistant girls soccer coach, approve the hire of Rudy Martinez as finance director, approve the hire of the following summer staff, club bikes, Sophia Paulson, Celeste Stahl, Holly Berquist, Samantha Johnson, Sarah Willetts, custodial, we have Kyle Haugrude, Todd Hughesby, Harmony Jensen, Connor Larson, Greta Tolleson, Carson Weers, kitchen, Jessica calls Ruth, Sophia calls Ruth, Robin Swanson. Summer rec coaches, Zayla Arrow, Xyla Arrow, Chelsea Blakeway, David Brown, David Dewey, Ivan Franco, Timmy Guler, Grace Hawkinson, Brendan Hansen, Hunter Hansen, McLean Hovland, Tori Hughesby, Keegan Nedsted, Eve Light, Norgren, Norgren, Naomi Peter, Jason Satter, Teresa Schleeman, Manny Biggar, and Tristan Wall. Item F, approve Lakes Country Service Co-op contracts, annual contract, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, health and safety contract, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-six, and ECFE consortium membership for two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four. Item G, approve insurance renewals for two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five. So entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent items as listed.
Do we have a second? I'll make the second. Discussion, do you have some information on the consent items?
Yeah, Emmy group has a few different things here that we want to share just to update. Mr. Martinez, do you want to start with the contracts and?
Yes, absolutely. Hold on, I need my coffee. How I am, how I can. I can be more pleasant now. All right, so in the consent items, we have, we'll go through the Lake Country Service contracts first. These are annual renewals for us and for the great service that the co-op provides. The first one is the annual contract, system membership contract for us to belong to the co-op. It's based on the number of students that we serve in the district and then there's a fee for it. Again, we get a lot of support from them, so we want to renew that contract. The second one is health and safety. This pertains a lot with Mr. Steve's because they come in and they make sure that we're always up to code. So we definitely want to renew that. Then the last one is the ECFE consortium contract. That is to help our ECFE teachers belong and network with more educators from the nine counties that the co-op serves to make sure that they have that network and exchange ideas. And it also helps them kind of keep up to date on all the different mandates and different things that change within those particular programs. So those are the three Lakes Country Service Co-op contracts that we would like you guys to renew. My again, some services for us, they support us in those particular areas. Then the last piece we have is the insurance renewal. This is directly related to our liability insurance. Practically what covers our entire buildings. Also our work compensation, so if an employee of the district gets injured on grounds, it helps us cover that sense. And then cybersecurity is huge, so it also covers our cybersecurity. So I'll go into the cost of it because it did go up quite a bit. And I want to explain exactly where those particular increases were. So, Mr. Corbin, do you want to click the hyperlink of the insurance renewal piece, please? Zoom in. So. There we go. Now I can make it bigger. Perfect. So here's our insurance renewal, our liability and speaking to our broker, which is Ballard out of Fargo. And Ballard is nationwide, so they have a very big umbrella in terms of all the different insurance providers that they work with. Over the last few years, for our liability piece, we've been with Citizens, very good company, they take really well care of us. And when we started to work with Ballard last year, we make sure that there was enough coverage in the event of total catastrophe, right? So the scenario that we want to paint is that we want to make sure that if anything ever happens to one of our buildings, we need to have enough coverage to rebuild. Plus, we don't want to get into what happened, I believe it was in the Wadena area about ten years ago when a tornado went through and practically destroyed the school district. At that point in time, that school district found out that they didn't have enough coverage to rebuild. And we don't want to be in that situation. And from that, it was kind of that case study that helped a lot of the school districts to over insure. So that's what we have for you guys here. The market rate right now for liability insurance for school districts across the board, this is coming from our broker Ballard, is between twelve to fifteen percent. And we are in that ballpark. You can see the different things that our liability covers. And when you look at everything, we are in that, in that about thirteen percent range. So I'm very happy with the rates that came back. Cyber risk, huge again. We want to make sure that we're cyberly protected. So the increase in cybersecurity risk insurance is actually me helping our coverage. So what happened in the spring was that Minneapolis Public was held ransom to hack attacks and we don't want to be in that scenario. And same thing happened to Rochester Public. So two huge school districts in Minnesota literally got hacked and they had to pay a fee to the hackers so they wouldn't release student public information. So I want to make sure that we're always covering that particular sense. The biggest increase that came in our, in our policy came from workers' compensation. So worker compensations, like any other insurance happens, that the more you use it, the more that insurance costs go up. And what's determined is by a state called the, practically the, it's called the Incident Modifier. And it's based on the number of claims over a three-year period aggregate. We've had a very good modifier for the last couple of years until this recent year that we've had substantial amount of claims from, from the weather did not help us. We had significant amount of people falling on ice. In addition to our special ed paras, because they serve some of those students with needs, they get beat up a little bit. So we had a significant amount of increase in work, work comp claims due to those two particular areas. What that happened to do is because last year we had, was it twenty-eight M, twenty-eight claims? Twenty-eight, somewhere in the ballpark of about twenty-eight, twenty-eight claims admitted last year, we drove our modifier significantly up. And you can see that reflected in our work compensation policy premium increase. It literally increased eighty-seven percent. So with that, our insurance broker had a really hard time trying to shop for work compensation. So our job is now in the next year is try to figure out how do we implement more safety things to bring that modifier back down, right? And it takes, and it takes everyone, right? From making sure that the sidewalks are clean, to making sure that we give our paraprofessionals the, the training that they need on how to handle students, to making sure that all our safety codes are up to code, whatever it is, right? So that's one thing that we're going to be working on next year to make sure that we continue to drive that cost down, keep that modifier down, and then we get better ratings. Overall, we've been very pleased with this particular broker shopping in our behalf. So I would recommend them that we continue to stick with them. They're very good, very attentive to us, and they definitely fight for the district's best value. Any questions regarding the insurance renewal?
Questions? Thank you. Any discussion on the consent items? Mr. Nelson? Mrs. Jay?
Oh, is Mrs. King on here?
Yep.
Oh, so my one would be for hiring Mrs. King as student council advisor. She will be replacing Mrs. Hume after her resignation, but she will be a great add to student council.
Thank you.
Okay, a few other items, just hires for extracurricular. And then summer, which is seasonal help for club bikes, custodial, kitchen, summer rec coaches. So we're very thankful for all of them to, willing to work this summer. And last item that I have for consent items is the hiring of Rudy Martinez as finance director. So what we have done, we've had a contract with SMS. Okay, Mr. Martinez is no longer working for SMS starting July first. So what we did is we no longer contract with SMS. So then we opened up the position. And then Mr. Martinez was interested in working with just ISD five four eight. So we're recommending to hire him as our finance director. And then the hiring of Elizabeth Brenna Mule, a special ed teacher. Right now, it has special ed because we'll look at our needs here in early August to see where our needs are at with kids coming in and out with special ed. And then we'll place her and give her duties here early August. And that would be either at the elementary or high school for special ed.
Anything else? Any more discussion? Any discussion? Okay. So consent items, a couple of us are going to have to abstain on this because of the Lakes Country contract, so. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? I am abstaining.
And I am abstaining, yep.
So two abstain, abstention. Okay, we're back to our laptop. Thanks, Greg. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Okay, not hearing anything, so we've got some acknowledgements here. First of all, activity workers for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Substitutes for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We have all state spring athletes, we have golf participant Brady Pesnick. Softball, team all-star silver academic award. All state academic award, Kai Nelson and Sylvia Pesh. Track, boys and girls teams, team all-state gold academic award. All state academic, Grace Backstrom, Trevon Benson, Sadie Funk, Kelsey Eisman, Oregon Court, Charlie Larson, Anna Roysum, Rodie Severson, Ellie Welch, Jack Welch. All state Charlie Larson, Justin Jacobson, Ellie Welch. State participants, Grace Backstrom, Trevon Benson, Anthony Checo de Souza, Megan Guler, Justin Jacobson, third place in discus, Carter Johnson, Jack Kapinga, Mark Kapinga, Tristan Lambert, Charlie Larson, ninth place in eight hundred meter and sixth place in sixteen hundred meter, Ellie Welch, seventh place in discus. Congratulations there. Ryan, you have anything to add?
No, very thankful for our activity workers that helped us out. When we were hosting home events without them, we couldn't hold these activities. And our substitutes this year, very thankful for them of stepping in and helping us out to continue teaching and learning. We have some great substitutes that some of them almost sub daily, so very thankful. And congratulations to all our student athletes representing Pelican Rapids. Two of our student school board members that are on the list, congratulations to Ellie and Sylvia.
Yep, and I want to recognize Sylvia Pesh. We have a State School Board Association Service Award. Would you like to accept the award?
Yes.
Thank you. We've got a plaque coming too.
Oh, do you?
So should I wait to do that?
Yeah.
It's not here yet though, so it might have to be a different thing.
See, come back. Get to.
Well, we could do a picture afterwards too. Okay, we'll move on to administrative reports. Elementary principal and athletic director, Derek Nelson.
Summer school, we're in our third week of summer school. Want to thank the teachers, the Mrs. Hyberg for all of her work in getting everything lined up. Things have gone very smooth, different activities they've done. Club bikes, we've had a great turnout again this summer. And thank you, Mrs. Hondred, for her creativity. Without her pool, she's come up with a bunch of different water activities. And thanks to Trevor and his staff for helping them on these hot days get some different cooler activities for the kids. And I think the turnout's been great and we do a great job with the kids down there. So thank you to all the workers in club bikes. Activities report, as we said, hire Kate Myteam as assistant girls soccer coach. One thing you'll be approving is our Minnesota State High School League yearly resolution. And that just approves that Falcon Rapids is part of the high school league so we can participate in high school league activities. If this isn't approved, then we cannot play other teams that are Minnesota State High School League sponsored teams. So we would have no one to play except for like club teams. So this is just the yearly saying that we will abide by the high school league rules that every other team in the state does. Congratulations, Eve, we already went over the Brady Pestic, I made it to the state golf meet. He made it through subsections and then two days a section to make it to the state meet, which is a very good accomplishment, so congratulations. Track athletes have made it to the state tournament, Megan Guler, Ellie Welch, Grace Backstrom, boys Carter Johnson, Charlie Larson, Anthony Checo de Souza, Mark Kapinga, Jack Kapinga, Tristan Lambert, Justin Jacobson, Trevon Benson. And as we stated, Ellie Welch got seventh in the disc, congratulations. Charlie was ninth in the eight hundred, sixth in the sixteen hundred meter, and Justin third in the discus, so great showing down at the state meet. So congratulations to athletes and coaches. Trap team went to Alec on June fourteenth. Some highlights from there, we have three individuals who got twenty-five in a row. To maybe explain why there's no ducks in there yet with all the good shooting going on. That was Ian Fay, it was Rockstead, and Brickard Haugrude at twenty-five in a row. So congratulations to them and the team and all the volunteer coaches that helped with the trap team. We had our meeting for the two thousand twenty-three Hall of Fame. And we have five, four individuals in one group going in to the Hall of Fame this year. The individual, individuals are Jim Knudson, who graduated, I believe, in seventy-seven. Pat Westby, was an eighty-four grad. Brian Evenson, longtime girls golf coach. Joy Cruckleburg, early nineties track athlete and I believe other sports as well, but really excelled in track. And then the seventy-six, seventy-seven boys basketball team. So they will be honored at the gala on September twenty-third. And also honored at halftime of football game on the twenty-second. So congratulations to that group of athletes. Any questions?
Oh, I don't hear any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Janoszewski, Ella High School.
As he pulls it up there, student enrollment, we ended three higher than we started. Ended enrollment at four hundred and sixteen for grades seven through twelve. Summer meals are new this year at the high school and have been great. Ms. Calsrud is doing what Ms. Calsrud does best. And her daughter Sophia Calsrud is helping her a couple of days a week in the kitchen as well. But meals are available Monday through Thursday in the morning and then also for lunch. And that will go through the middle of August. Summer school, we are on the last leg of summer school here. Mr. Haugrude, Mr. Eric, and Mr. Schaefer graciously have been teaching about twenty students, get credits back in math, social studies, and language arts. Agenda items, I mentioned the hire of Mrs. King. She will be a great leader for our student council group. And then just some summer projects that are on the docket here at the high school. Updating student staff handbook, finalize the master schedule now with Mrs. Lage. We're going to meet tomorrow, I hope, now that we pretty much have our teaching staff in order, finalize that and get that out to teachers. Work on some staff development topics, update our mentorship program a little bit. And then I'm going to work on some new class and curriculum support for teachers with the four new classes that we have coming through, just making sure they have what they need to be ready in the fall. One cool thing, I found out that our EMT class will be totally funded through a grant through the state. So it'd be a great opportunity for our students. That's all I have. Any questions?
How are the meals funded? That's pretty cool, cause that's happening.
It's a federal, federal grant for student teams?
Is it?
Yeah.
It's a federal grant that we are eligible for, literally called summer food program. They take a look into your, they take a look into the area's poverty rate. They take a look into the school's free and reduced percentage. And then based on that, they allocate a certain number of dollars. So in our situation, we are one hundred percent reimbursed because those two factors are significantly high in our district. So it's a, it's a great program, great program to have.
Any more questions? Thank you. Who wants to go first? Our student board representative.
All I wanted to say was I think it was a great year. We had a good variety of activities throughout the whole year, whether it was prom, celebration of cultures, MHS's blood drive, ditch cleaning, or SAD's mock crash. Those are only a couple of the huge highlights that we had throughout the whole year. It was an amazing year and I'm very excited to come back as long as the rest is for next year, senior year.
Yeah. Well, Sally, I have nothing to add to that.
Thank you. Are you going to be at our July meeting?
Um, I'll probably be there, yeah. And then I'll retire.
Okay. Okay, next up, building and ground, secret talent, Mr. Thieves.
Do you have a list of, of stuff?
I will, let me override you, I have it out there.
That's why they're getting that going up, building updates. Have you seen the, the old block structures down? And they dug the footings for the new building. Then we found out that we are waiting for the state to approve the plumbing for the project. They, they control everything. So we, they're still about two weeks away. So we are on hold until we get that, because that starts at the ground. It's got to go under the cement and then build up. So we asked for a variance and they said, nope, you will have to wait till you get your permit. And that was sent in April twenty-fifth and it should have been four to six weeks, but the state's running twelve weeks by. So our finished timeline, target date, well, I guess the building will be done when it's, when it's done. We will work, well, once we get going, all the contractors are ready to go. They were going to pour the slab this week, but everybody's on hold. So once, once we get to go ahead, things will really go. But we'll work hard to get, get ready for September first, opening home football game. So I'll keep you posted as we proceed. So this is district Y, these are just some things that some of it is ongoing. I have a four play clock for a football field. That is something that a lot of schools have already implemented. And we'll be adding, we have the clocks, we just got to get them installed. So there'll be a one on each end zone. And those are timed, so there's so much time in between running the plays. And then there's someone that will run those clocks. The new track set, we're going to put a KEFOP system in that parking lots. We do this annually, seal coat, I think it's be the northeast lot of the elementary this year. We're on a good rotation so we don't get hit with them all at the same time. Tennis courts, keep them crack sealed so they don't get water in them and bust it up. The discus area is going to, going to eventually move over to the northwest corner of the track facility. But being, we have a severe lack of rain, we're not growing much grass in that area that was re-landscape last year. So we'll get, hopefully we can get the pads in and stuff, but we're probably going to be a year out. You know, unless we, something happens and the skies open. Unless we, something happens and the skies open up on us and we can really grow. It would be usable, but we wanna make sure it's nice. Some stuff to add, fall pole's going in at the west softball field. We're holding up on that east until we move the discus area. Then we can continue the outfield fence. So it'll be like the west field and then we were gonna build dugouts over there. Playground at the elementary. The old orange unit on the, on the big playground along fifty-nine. That original orange playground unit that I believe is forty years old. We are on the schedule to replace that. We were last year, but the company just didn't have enough time to get us on the list. So we are on the list. I did email them the other day and haven't heard back of when we will be there. So we're removing that orange set, we're removing that old bus and that dinosaur rocking thing. And those things all get replaced with new. Then we get into the elementary, it's just some annual maintenance. Floor recoats on our epoxy floors, which those floors have held up great. We end up doing a new top coat on them about every five to six years. So that's, that's been really good. The roof duct and piping at the elementary, all that duct work. We wanna make sure we stay vigilant on making sure that doesn't get dis-repaired. So what we're gonna start doing is wrapping, it's gonna change the color from like a silver to a white. And that will actually have like a PVC coating on it, which will make it last even longer. It's gonna be very expensive to replace all of that, so we wanna stay up on that. Just some other little things, little sidewalk. I know in dealing with slip strips falls in the winter, which we had a, you know, a terrible ice storm early and we dealt with it all year. We're looking at maybe replacing a few sidewalks on how they're laid out because they like to flood. We get water over them and then we freeze and dog, freeze and dog. So that's some of that. Did a lot of work in Mrs. Johnson's room, she wants her lockers out, we're starting new cabinets. We're building those right now. Little painting, high school. We get some ceiling around overhead doors. Roof drains working on today. The splash pads are some broke and replacing those. Replacing a door, door nine is between the heights, between the egg shop and art room. We did some work downstairs in the, in the lower senior high. Put in some sports flooring and had to finish that up. It was a project we started last year and then ran out of products. So we just finished that yesterday. Some more painting, gym floors will be done in early August. And there's some paintings in the locker rooms that are now going on its seventh year already after remodel. So a bit of that stuff. Auditorium, stage floor, every few years we do that. And we just keep up on our painting in our classrooms and stuff. And the security updates are updating our camera system. They're digital, so they're like a computer. So they timeout a lot faster than I think they should, but it's one of those things that we have to keep on going. Just some stuff that keeps us busy throughout the summer. Then the other, you know, anything else that pops up on a daily basis. Say we have summer school here, so we have a little bit of, you know, whenever there's people in the building, there's things to do. We are fully staffed, so that's nice. Everybody's working hard and moving along and very soon we're gonna be out there done with this. So questions, went through that pretty fast, but a lot of it's just ongoing annual. And then like I say, the building, as soon as we get the okay from the state, which we should have, you know, two weeks ago, but well, we can't really hold their feet too far. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, finance report.
Take one drink, get my game face on. It's called the Booty Show. It's too early to laugh at your jokes. All right, we'll start with, I have no idea what's controlling. We'll start with the finance director report. As I'm pulling it up and trying to multitask. There we go. There we go. All right, finance report for the month end of May, so five thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. Overall, again, just a pretty standard month for the school district. We started our investment account with five point eight million dollars, of which we received nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars in state aid. From that, I had to withdraw six hundred and fifty thousand and bring it down to our checking account to make sure that we covered all of our liabilities for the month. End of investments for the month of May was six point two million dollars. This is very typical, towards the end of the month, you kinda start to replenish a lot of your reserves again. It really is that month of January, February that we call them dry months in the state. But other than that, very good, very good place for our investments to be in. In terms of cash flow, which is the cash on hand that we have in our checking account, we started the month with negative twenty-one thousand dollars. And again, we have a zero balance account, which as soon as it hits zero, it pulls directly from our investment account. So we never overdraft, just wanna make it clear in that. For fiscal purposes, I represent, I like this, just so you guys can see it. But we started the, we started the month with a negative balance of twenty-one thousand dollars. We received deposits in our checking account of three point one million dollars. Significant and large amount. And that has to do with the second half of our levy coming due. So Otitele County, Becker County and Clay County deposited the monies that they owe the school district for the year, for the fiscal year twenty-three. So that hit our checking account and then it brings up our cash on hand significantly high. Now what's gonna happen here in the next couple of weeks is the state knows that, so they're not gonna pay any money to us until the end of July. So again, if we were in a different situation, you always wanna make sure that you have enough cash on hand to get you through the dry periods. So you always hear about the state holding ten percent back. And this is that period where they hold that ten percent back because they know that you have enough cash on hand. So moving on to accounts payable, we had total bills for the district of six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Payroll equated to three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That was a little high, but that had to do with some of the co, no, actually, that's, that's right on mark. Coaching payables will be in the month of June, so we're good. Total cash on hand at the end of the month was two million dollars. So for total, for total liquid cash for the school district was eight point two million dollars. So pretty comfortable, pretty comfortable place to be in. Now our job is to make sure that we allocate those dollars and we have our money work for us and capitalize as much as we can on those interest and dividends. So that's what we have for the treasurer's report. Any questions before I move on? There were no journal entries this particular month. And the reason why there were no journal entries was because we, the state asked us to put a little bit of a pause because they also don't know how to account for the legislations that came down the pipeline. So it practically said, hold on, don't clean your books yet. Give us some time to give you some guidance on. So we're waiting for MBE to give us the guidance on how to clean up the, closing the books for this fiscal year. We had a year-end meeting at Lake Country Service Co-op, where Region One, our accounting service, come in and kinda gives us that guidance. And it was a very short meeting because they said, we have nothing. We have nothing for you guys, but we'll kinda talk through some of the basic things. So we're waiting on that guidance. Overall, it will be a pretty good year. Next month, I'll have a projection in terms of where we're gonna end for the fiscal year and then have some of the new guidance. So you're gonna start to see now that can start to happen significantly. The last page is on the treasurer's report, like always, is all of the payables that run through the school district. So if you have any questions on any of those payables, again, I have the supporting documentation to make, to justify it. So if you have any questions about that, let me know and I'll be happy to provide it. But again, overall, pretty good, healthy month for the school district. Other things that we have, Mr. Steve talked about the LTFM report. He specifically told you guys what he's gonna be working on, right? So those areas where we're gonna spend the dollars. By Minnesota statute, I have to walk you guys through the revenue side and the ten-year expenditure plan for the school district. And then at the end, you guys will have to pass the resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty-five LTFM report. So we'll go into the revenue side. Really, the value of this computation is literally the last cell, which then tells us that for, here's the revenue projection for the next ten years. What, what we have here is for fiscal year twenty-five, we are projected to receive one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, three hundred and one. Right? So we need to make sure that when we budget for our LTFM projects, that we're always seen in within this mark. LTFM is a restricted revenue stream that the state gives us the guidance that you can accumulate a surplus and you can also go into deficit, right? They understand that as a building ages, more maintenance is required. Now, the problem with that is that they haven't adjusted the funding for it. One of the things that we did when LTFM became available back in twenty seventeen was that we, you had the option to tie a lot of your funds to it. They used to be called facility maintenance bonds. And this impacts this particular revenue stream. So I'll point that out, that as some, as we pay some of that debt down, you're gonna start to see our revenue for LTFM increase significantly. But we won't see that until fiscal year thirty-two and thirty-three. But at that point in time, right, our building would be kinda in that middle age range, our district will be. And you can see that more dollars are needed to upkeep the building. So wanna point that out to you guys. So far, we get, we get okay dollars to keep up with some of the demands that, that our district has. So that is the revenue side. Again, the main concept is to understand that we are going to receive a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five. And our job is then to allocate those dollars properly within a ten-year plan. So then the ten-year plan for expenditures, it's right here. So I'll, I'll go into the first pieces, which is in fiscal year twenty-five, right? So we, we're looking at this column right here. How do we divide up the dollars? We always allocate about eighteen thousand dollars to fire, fire physical asbestos and indoor quality. Again, actually, part of the Lake Country Service Co-op contract goes in here, that the safety that we, that we just approved goes in here. We wanna make sure that we're always up to code in those particular items. The remaining of the funds, we allocate based on all those items that Trevor talked to you guys about. They come with a code that then we budget for. So all these codes have a meaning, right? So we're going to allocate ten thousand dollars to building envelope. We're gonna allocate eighty-three thousand dollars to building hardware and equipment. That's the playground that Trev was talking about, that's our biggest expense item. And so on and so forth. So everything that when Trev was reading, you guys saw a dollar figure on the right-hand side. All that is then consolidated into this particular, into this particular codes that the state gives us. Now, I mentioned that we're going to receive a hundred and eighty-three thousand, but this year we're projected to spend a hundred and eighty-nine. And that's okay because we have a reserve in LTFM of seventeen thousand dollars. So we're overspending, but we actually have a little bit of a savings in there, so we'll be okay. In terms of the ten-year plan, we do our best to project what the school will need in the future. And Trev does a really good job. He knows the life cycles of a lot of our equipment and operating things. I can tell you guys that the biggest things that we have coming up in the next couple of years is gonna be boilers, okay? So we're working with the LTFM department at MBE to figure out if there's going to be an additional funding source that we can tap into to figure out how to replace those boilers. Each boiler costs you between one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. So it's a significant expense. They have about at, at most a fifteen-year life expectancy. Ours are about the ten to twelve-year margin. So that's gonna be a big expense that is gonna be coming up. So more to come on that. We're doing some research on how we can get additional LTFM dollars for that particular purpose. Then the last, the last page on, on this is simply the assurances. And this is related, it requires a superintendent signature. And essentially simply it's an assurance attachment saying that we are going to use the dollars that they give us responsibly and spend them correctly and appropriately to the areas that we're saying. So all in, all in all, LTFM, you guys passed the resolution in the business item. Mr. Corb signs it and we're approved. We'll send that to the state. Questions on fiscal year twenty-five LTFM?
Will this be resolution or just approval?
Just approval. We're approval, wouldn't it? Okay. Perfect. So that's that. Then the big ticket item is our budget. We are required by the state of Minnesota to have an adopted budget prior to the new fiscal year starting. Otherwise, we can't spend any money. That would not be a good thing. So with that said, I'll kinda just recap a lot of the narrative that I put in the budget that we sent out to you guys. If you have any questions along the way, please go ahead and stop me because it's rather lengthy and I was never an English student, but somehow I get really motivated to write this. So district officials, you know who you are. Administrative staff. And then we have our strategic plan. Again, we wrote this a couple of years ago. Still pretty, pretty good, so we just borrow that. And then we have, we go into the narrative of the budget. A lot of this, again, it's written from my opinion with a lot of facts behind the scenes in terms of everything that revolves around my world. Essentially, for the budget overview, I'm telling you guys what the purpose of the budget is, where it's going and some of the moving factors that we account for. And one of those things is that funding formula. It's our biggest benefactor in terms of the aid that we receive. Legislation passed the current biennium where we got four percent the first year and then two percent the second year. And you see me note that in the middle paragraph of this. In terms of the section of enrollment, we put a graphic for you guys to analyze. The difference between my numbers that you guys see versus the number that the principals report to you on a, on a monthly basis is that I take what the state calls pupil units, where they take the kits, the number of count of kits, and then they do different, different things to tell you exactly how much. and then they do different, different things to tell you exactly how much they're going to pay you. So, this is where attendance comes into place, because at the end of the day, the state will only pay you the number of hours that the student was actually at school. So, attendance is huge. So, if you have a student that equates to one FTE, that equates to one pupil unit, if the student was only here 90% of the time for the hours that we are reporting to the state, guess how much the state's going to pay us? 90% of that funding formula. So, that's why in our administrative meetings, I always look at attendance and I always beat up the principals. You've got to get students here. You've got to get students here, okay? So, again, that's how the funding mechanism in Minnesota works. There's also another, another factor behind the scenes that the state of Minnesota pays you more for a student from 7th to 12th grade. The ratio for that, they pay you at 120%, because they believe that the older kids require more funding to be educated. It's more expensive to teach a 7th grader than it is a kindergarten in their, in their mindset. So, we'll welcome the additional funding. But those are some of the different formula factors that are played in here. So, again, we projected that for fiscal year '23, '24, we were going to get 845 pupil units, of which we put in a 10-student reserve gap for any fluctuations, whether students moving out of the district or any attendance factor that will impact us at the end of the year. So, the budget is constructed in 835 students, okay? There is a language in there that I fought for a long time when I was writing it, but I have to be very honest and very candid, and that is that we are experiencing a slight student enrollment decline. And that is very alarming in the sense that we need to start tying things down in terms of expenditures. We need to start projecting better. We need to start negotiating better, because we need to look at the long-term expectation and life expectancy of the teacher. We need to make sure that our dollars go further. So, student enrollment fluctuates significantly, and I hope it's just one of those years that, or one of those trends in the last two years that is just going down because of still pandemic or whatever it is. And I'm hoping in the next two years, we start to see that trend go up again. I hope it's just a quick, small down peak. But I do have to let you guys know, in all honesty, we're watching it rather closely. Okay? So, the budget is constructed in 835 students. And from that, I then tell you guys a little bit of our funding stream, the history of it, and essentially, where the dollars come from and how they're allocated. Thing to note here, again, is just the latest legislative bill that we're going to get for in two. And then I break out the dollars for you in terms that we're going to receive general education revenue totaling $8.4 million. 461% of our budget comes from state aid. And then additional revenue of $1.7 million, or 12% of the general education revenue is paid through property taxes, our levies. The most exciting part on these statistics are the following, which I'm very proud. And this one brought me significant joy as I was writing it, when I was doing the analytical work. Today in Minnesota, we have 520 schools, in charter schools, that are registered for the state of Minnesota, and they are receiving some form of aid. We are ranked 169 out of 520. And this is more a factor of efficiency. That means that we're doing a darn good job on how we manage our monies, okay? In comparison, last year, we were at 220th. This year, we're 169. That is very good, very, very good for us. And again, this is more of a measure of efficiency. Here is how we rank in terms of the revenue, the revenue and how we rank in terms of state average. So, if you break out the revenue, if you look at just local revenue, and that's just your levy dollars, that's what our taxpayer give us, we are 116th out of 520. If you look just at state aid, we're 108 out of 520. And federal, we're...
208.
Thank you. 208 out of 520. And then federal, we are 112 out of, out of that 520. So, pretty darn good statistics for us. Again, it's just a measure of efficiency. You can see how our dollars compare to state averages. In terms of local revenue, we receive about $4,383, and the state average is about $3,800. State, we are equating about $10,000 bucks, and the state is about an 11. For federal, we're receiving about $3,458 per student, where the state average is about $2,157. The difference to note here is those SRE and COVID grants, which are expiring at the end of this fiscal year. So, the stats for us in that federal column are going to be significantly different next year. So, at the end of the day, total, per pupil unit, we receive about $18,000, and the state average is about $18,000. So, we are right in the ballpark on that state average. Very good place for us to be in, but it took a lot of work to get here. We had to pass an operating levy referendum. We had to cut $1 million from our operating budget. So, again, statistics are awesome, but the work that we did was not so fun. But, again, great, great place to be in. Then I just put a graph on the last audited numbers that the state compiled, which is fiscal year '22, and you can see the breakdown of revenues that we have compared to what the state is. Quite a bit of categories, but it's all the different revenue streams. So, if you want to look at them, please go ahead, and you'll see how we rank to state averages. Then we go into the expenditure side. This is just a quick graphic to show you guys where our monies are spent. You can see that the majority of the money is spent, what the money is intended to do, which goes into instruction, supporting our kits. So, the majority of our money gets spent into classrooms, which is very good. Then, it also goes into paying administration, transportation, maintenance, keeping up our building. You can see, you can see all the different things. Special education accounts were about 13% of our expenditures. And like I mentioned, the majority of our dollars, a little over 70%, goes into actual classroom, which is what we want to do. We want to keep those dollars there, okay?
Rudy, can I ask?
Yes, absolutely.
So, how does this compare to, we have the state averages then to, like, put aside by side?
I can pull that information. I didn't, I didn't want to do it compared to state averages, just because, just because we have more say on how we spend our dollars. That's why I kind of gave you guys just the breakdown on how we spend them. But I'll be happy to pull that information and kind of give you guys how we, how we rank in terms of state averages. So, I'll put that on my, on my to-do list, and I'll have it for you guys on the next upward agenda.
Thanks, just curious.
Yep. Then the last piece is really what the budget looks at, which is where are we projected to end up next year? And this is where that fund balance goes in and play. So, want to be very clear on that first paragraph, just to make sure that there is no confusion. We are projected to be, at the end of fiscal year '23, '24, at around the 39% fund balance, okay? But that's the overall general fund balance one, okay? That's our operating fund. So, we're projected to end at about 39%. However, out of that 39%, we have to really look at, at all the restricted dollars that are allocated within the general fund. So, you'll see on that second chart that I put together where we would be. So, really, the unassigned, which is your rainy day fund, is going to be at about that 28%, which is, is a little bit higher than what our policy is, and it's a very good, it's a very good place to be in. Then you see all the sub-funds that equate to that 39%. You see those restricted dollars start to grow, and that is very common when you have a healthy financial district. You're going to start to see gifted and talented start to grow a little bit. You're going to start to see basic skills grow significantly, and this is due to the new legislation that we're now getting more dollars for our E.L. kids and our pre and reduced kids. So, you see that particular reserve fund go up significantly, grow to about 8%. Safe schools, you see that grow to $43,000 or .35. And then you see that LTFM revenue starting to grow as well. And then deferred maintenance. And then the unassigned fund, again, is going to be at about 28%. So, when I say the general fund is going to be at 39%, that's a true statement, but we also then have to look at all the subcategories that are within that 39%. So, unassigned fund, 28%, okay? Total revenues that we are expected to receive, you can see the breakdown on the first chart of all the different funds. So, for the general fund, we're expected to receive about $12 million, and we are going to spend about $12.1. At the end of the day, we're going to have an ending balance of $4.7 million, just in Fund One, okay? Again, the theory here is revenue, we're under-projecting, and expenditures, we're over-projecting. That is just, that's just a theory that all business managers implement. We have a 10-student reserve gap in revenue, because at the end of the year, we always want to make sure that we make more money than what we budgeted. And expenditures, we want to make sure we spend more, or I'm sorry, less than what we budgeted for, okay? Any questions on the whole budget?
A couple of things to add. One is with enrollment, looking at enrollment and looking at our census. We're concerned about our census. Knowing that it's a continuous process with it, we probably don't have anyone. When we do our census, we do 0 to 4. And looking at our 0 to 4 census numbers, they're very low as the younger they get. So, that's a concern when we're looking at the future and with staffing. The second item is, we're going to need, right now, we're going to need additional staffing. Looking at our needs with our students, with support staff. So, we're looking at additional hires in paraprofessionals because of student needs. So, we're going to wait until, we're going to advertise in July, and then we're going to wait and see to see if any kids moved in, moved out, and then we'll start hiring in early August with paraprofessionals. But that's very concerning, because we have not had a lot of people apply for those positions here in the last year or two. So, anyways, our admin team is working on that plan.
That's all I have for you guys.
Any questions? I don't hear any. Thank you. Mr. Corr.
Okay, few items here. I just want to go, one thing that's not on record, then Mr. Nelson talked about the gala of the teams and individuals that are being ducked into the Hall of Fame. We also honor former staff. And this year, the staff that we are honoring is Bonnie Nordstrom, Wayne Wooliver, Kathy Bergren, and Judy Tabit. So, we're going to be honoring them, former staff members here at ISD 548 at the same night. So, fun night to bring them back and talk to them and connect. First item, Communications Committee's been working on our brochure to email out to all district families. And then we go to kind of the border of our school district, and we mail them the same brochure. And we are finalizing our video that we're going, that we're putting together with Micah Kavett. Micah Kavett worked with Mrs. Johnashevsky and Mr. Bregman, and they came in and did different shots with our students and put together a 60-second video that we are going to put on social media, Channel Two, at our events. And then we're looking at, working with the Pelican Rapids Press that has some options there to put it on some social media. And then we're contacting WDOY to see what we can do there for like a commercial. So, we have a 60-second and a 30-second video that we put together. And once that's finalized, we'll share that with, with all of you. We're hoping to get everything out here the last week of June. So, throughout July, people have our brochures, they're seeing our video that's out there. We're also discussing strategies for students from 0 to 4, what information we're sharing with those families and families that homeschool, looking at strategies there to bring them in for maybe even some certain classes, CTE classes, things like that. So, good discussions with our Communications Committee. Safe Routes to School Committee's been working hard. They've worked hard with the city, along with the city and West Central Initiative members. They did an observation of how students get to school. They surveyed parents, they surveyed students, and then they met throughout the year. And they're finalizing the Safe Routes to School Plan and then applying for some money that they can use, the city can use to help improve its paths, sidewalks, things like that. So, once we get that finalized, we will share that with all of you. Admin's been busy here, and office staff's been busy planning for the school year. Admin's been working on New Teacher Workshop, the Fall Workshop, District Workshop schedule, and then working with Lonnie, who is a coach for leader and meeting. So, I'm very busy in June, meeting with them and, and planning our staff development for the year. Negotiations update, we'll be negotiating. Our Finance Committee will be negotiating with our teachers here in June and July and August, throughout the summer, maybe possibly the fall, and then support staff, and then admin. So, Finance Committee will be very busy working that out, and they'll communicate as things progress. Mr. Steve talked about the multipurpose building update. There's one thing that I'd like to add is that on, we have always wanted to put LSEGLI, the lettering, LSEGLI Activity Center on Highway 59 side. Along with that, we're getting a big Viking head, and that is lighted. So, in the dark, you see the Viking head, and you'll be able to see, hopefully, the lettering about activity center. So, when people are coming to events or coming through town, that will hopefully stick out, so. Talked about the Finance Director position, some school board agenda items. School Board meetings for approval. If you looked at the dates, they're mostly corresponding. December, we moved up a week, just because in January, we have to meet right away because of the reorganization. So, we met, I believe, the second Wednesday, December 13th, we put down for a date, because we're meeting January 3rd. Couple other dates in March and May, there's conflicts on those Wednesdays. So, that's why they're on Mondays. And then Wednesday, we moved it up a week because of Juneteenth, so, enjoy. So, that's why some of the days are a little bit different with that. Talked about hires already. Policies, we have two policies. We have the second rating on Policy 524 and 535. 524 is the Internet Acceptable Use Safety Policy for students and staff. The big addition and change is in Policy 524 is a notification regarding technology providers, school-issue devices unlimited on screen time for children in preschool. school-issued devices unlimited on screen time for children in preschool and kindergarten was added. In Policy 535, now that we have a, a service animal here at the high school, we have this policy put in place. This is new to ISD 548, and it's a recent addition to the MSBA policies. So, and the purpose of that policy is establish parameters for the use of service animals in the building for students and staff and visitors. Okay? Sylvia's coming in July, so we'll save that piece for July, and then we'll, we'll have a, uh, thank you, a plaque for you, and we'll take a picture again, or take a picture for the first time in July. So. I think that's all I have.
Who, um, Mr. Clark, who is on the communications committee?
Yep, admin, Mr. Martinez, Becky Wondert is on the communications committee. Any other questions? Okay, there ain't no other questions. We'll move into the business items. So we just went over school board meeting dates. Anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the 2023, 2024 school board meeting dates.
Motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
Second, second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion, comments about the meeting dates, or how did they look? So next meeting will be 7:00 AM, same thing with August. Correct, correct. That's good of everybody. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion on the motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item B, approve the long-term facility maintenance plan and statement of assurances for fiscal year 25.
I'll make a motion to approve the long-term facility maintenance plan and statement of assurances for fiscal year 25.
Okay, motion by Ann, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carried. Item C, approve the 23, 24 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
I can make a motion for the resolution for the membership to the Minnesota State High School League.
Motion by Stacy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Molly. So this is a resolution. Is it on here? Yes. Okay, so this is a resolution. 2023 Resolution for Membership of the Minnesota State High School League Membership Renewal Form. So resolve that the governing board or entity of Pelican Rapids High School located in the state of Minnesota delegates control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic activities and athletics referred to Minnesota Statute Section 128C.01 to the Minnesota State High School League and so, but so hereby certified to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the school listed and is authorized by this, the governing board of the said school district or school to renew its membership of the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interscholastic activities and athletics sponsored by the said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that the governing body or entity hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, policy, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file in the office of the school district or school, or as appears in the league's website, or in minimum standards governing participation in said league's sponsored activities and athletics. Further, further the administration responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities and athletics are assigned to the official representative identified by this governing board or entity. This above resolution was adopted by the governing board directed to the school district, school or district, and is recorded in the official minutes of said board and hereby is certified to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by law. So this is a resolution. Molly, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Brenda? Yes. Ann?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Ann, it carries. Item D, approve the 23, 24 proposed budget. So I'll make a motion to approve the 23, 24 proposed budget.
Also you.
Second by Brenda. Any discussion on the proposed budget? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the proposed budget signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item B, approve the second reading of the following policies. So we have 524 Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy and 535 Service Animals in Schools Policy. We have a motion for those.
I will motion to approve the second reading of those policies.
Motion by Stacy. Second by Ann. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the, the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries. So we have upcoming meetings, June 26th, work session, 7:30 PM. July 20th, yeah, July, it's a date, 19th?
Yep.
July 19th, July 19th, at 7:00 AM. Is there a regular board meeting for July? And August, what day was that, I guess?
16th.
16th. And August 16th at 7:00 AM is our August regular board meeting. So at this point, we are going to move into a closed session for superintendent evaluation pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 13B David 205, subdivision 3, small parentheses, A. And then one?
Motion to open the closing for superintendent evaluation.
Motion by Ann. Second. Second by Brenda.